Open up our regular school board meeting for December 2018. It is 4:00 PM. I actually have the opening exercises for today, and so I'm just gonna share some things with you. You know, today, as we open our school board meeting, I wanted us to pause and to focus for a moment. You see, today, we are, I'm sorry, together, we are the Citrus County Board of Education. As school board constitutional officers, we are charged with one of the greatest responsibilities, and that is the care of our students' academic education, and it isn't something that we take lightly. In Citrus County, our student's schools and leadership has had a consistent history of being most successful. As I begin my ninth year as a school board member, I am so grateful to the service of each and every one of you, particularly my school board members that I get to serve with, our excellent superintendent, Pamela, her leadership team, and all the educators and staff of our county. We have a lot of changes coming up in public education. The potential of this year is making people nervous, they're concerned, and they want to be hopeful. We have a new governor, we have a new education commissioner of education, a new speaker of the state house, a new president of the senate, and that's just the name of a few of the changes that are coming. There are people that are excited, and there are some people that are nervous, wondering and worrying as to the direction of public education in the state of Florida. But what gives me hope? What sets us apart is the leadership team here in Citrus County, who has consistently put the expectations of always focusing on one vital important thing: what is best for kids. While sometimes we might differ, once in a while, about how to achieve our goals, what is always clear from this board, from our superintendent, executive team, our school administrators, and right down to our classroom teachers, is that we are consistently focused on the same positive end results: our kids. So I wanted to give each of you something as we started out this new school board here, and that is this pin. I love pins. Anyone who's seen me around the schools will say it, whether it's a lapel pin or a lanyard pin. And the pin simply says what I believe all of us do, and that is "Kids First," which is what I believe we do in this district. So I wanted to share this with each one of you. I've got these for the executive teams, so share on that down. I've got one for you there, Mr. Johnny, I'll give it to you afterwards, and Mr. Heber, And I want to thank every one of you. It is always a pleasure serving with you, and honored to serve with each one of you. Superintendent, you are one amazing person, and we are grateful for that. With that, I ask we all raise and we say the national. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those of us that heard some of our young people reciting that, that is just amazing to our ears. I want to thank this amazing and wonderful full room, a lot of educators, a lot of friendly faces here, and with that, I will ask if we can adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
I move that we adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Powers, that we approve the agenda recommended by the superintendent. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approves 5-0. Citizens' comments, do we have any? We're gonna have opportunities later in the meeting at 5:15, and then at the end of the board meeting, and with that, we're gonna go into presentations. And we, boy, we have a lot of... Oh, we gotta approve the consent, I'm sorry. If I can have a motion?
No approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approves 5-0. Now, oh, yes, if you would please read the donations.
We have approved a $500 donation to Citrus Springs Elementary School from the DFW from 468 North M W P M. Approved the $500 donation to Fernando Elementary School from Revoi Works Jr., DFW Observatory 4252. Approved the $500 donation to Fernando Elementary School from the DFW Observatory 4252. Approved the $48,000 grant to Citrus Springs Middle School from the Jimmy Johnson Foundation for Health and Technology. Approved the $1,000 donation to Central River Middle School from Stillwater Legacy Inc. Approved the $3,250 donation to Ennis Mills School from Carolyn Hayes Estate. Approved the donation of 100 picnic tables to Citrus High School from Duke Energy, valued at a grand total of $5,000. Approved the $500 donation to Citrus High School from Citrus Springs Chamber of Commerce. Approved the $873.72 donation to Citrus High School from Everclear School Service and Care. Approved the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from Central Matrix and Wellness. Approved the $1,500 donation to Citrus Elementary School from Bayfront Health and Southern Ridge. Approved the $400 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from Caddie School of... Approved the $500 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from NSP F. We have a total of $64,373.72.
Here. Woo! Thank you to our many, many community members, and I don't know if everybody caught that, but donation to the Academy of Environmental Science for SCUBA equipment, Academy of Environmental Science, instead of having PE, they get SCUBA class. So if you want to know that, I know they're gonna be taking applications here soon, so check them out. Okay, now presentations, and with that, Pam Carnevali, thank you, Pam.
There are some seats down front, two whole ohs almost, if you'd like to come down front. Or not.
I'm Pam Carnevali, I'm a student health specialist, I'm going to present. Yes. Does it work? Sorry. I'm Pam Carnevali, I'm the student health specialist, I'm going to, here to introduce today, Rakita Patel, Department of Education, she's gonna present our district with the Florida Healthy District Award. This is an award that recognizes school districts for their efforts in promoting health and wellness in their students and their staff, and the award is based on eight components of the coordinated school health approach, and...
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, as Pam said, my name is Rakita Patel, I'm the statewide health education coordinator with the Florida Department of Education, and as a member of the Florida Partnership for Healthy Schools, it is my pleasure to award Citrus County School District as a Silver Level Healthy School District Award. I would like to tell you guys briefly what the partnership is made up of. So the Florida Partnership for Healthy Schools is a grassroots membership whose members represent organizations such as Florida Associations of District Schools Superintendent, Alliance for Healthier Generation, Healthy Kids Corporations, Florida PTA, Action for Healthy Kids, and a great number of statewide professional organizations. The primary purpose of this partnership is twofold: one is to inform advocacy for school health issues, and second, to recognize excellence, which is what I'm here for. So I'm sure you would agree that one way to inform advocacy is through data, and you'll be happy to know that Florida is rich in youth-related data. We have a great number of surveys that we collect from our Florida youth, and one of these surveys is the Florida Youth Risk and Catares Survey. I would like to share a few positive trends that we have observed over the years. We have percentage of students who rode with a driver who had been drinking alcohol decreased, and all of the data points that I'm about to share, they have all seen positive trend over the years, over the last five years. Sexual dating violence significantly decreased, alcohol and tobacco use decreased, and most surprising of it all is soda consumption decreased significantly. But there is one particular indicator that I would like to share with you, which is not a positive story, and that is percentage of students who have seriously considered committing suicide, or made a man, or attempted suicide is consistently high, and I'm sure you would agree that this calls for more mental health services, health education, and social and emotional education and development. One thing that I would say is that 87% of Florida high school students and 92% of middle schoolers say that it is important for schools to help students address the needs of today such as drug abuse, tobacco, dating violence, teen pregnancy, HIV/AIDS, and suicide. And I'm so happy to say that scoring as a Silver Level Healthy District indicates that your district is already working towards addressing the needs of your students. Lastly, I'm here to honor your entire district tonight, but I would like to mention a staff member whose contribution to the self-assessment has been instrumental, and that is Pamela Carnevali. You have a great resource and visionary in your district who are very instrumental in keeping your district infrastructure very strong, and I would like to say that the Florida Partnership for Healthy School applaud your district for establishing a positive culture and climate for your students and your staff, and for being at the forefront of ensuring a very healthy future for Florida, and we look forward as a partnership to support you with professional development resources, tools, and any other needs that you may have to continue your wellness initiatives. So if I please now may ask the superintendent and the school board members to come to the front and allow me to present a flag, and I also have a shirt, a polo shirt actually, for the superintendent that I would like to present. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[940.52][940.52][S01.12][S01] Now, to the good part. We are very pleased to award several cash, well, not cash, but gift cards today. It's always better to have a gift card than carry around cash, but we have, our first group is the Elementary School Essay Contest, and I'm gonna call the names of the students. If you can quickly come up here, we have Jenna Ramsey, Hernando Elementary, Michaela Kepin, Floral City, Emerald Nickel, Floral City, and Abigail Molitor from Rock Crusher. So these in order, Jenna Ramsey was our honorable mention, third place was Michaela Kepin from Floral City, second place Emerald Nickel, Floral City, and first place Abigail Molitor from Rock Crusher. And Abigail, I have to apologize, I'll have to redo your certificate, I misspelled your name. And these students are all getting certificates and gift cards. Before you leave, we are gonna do a group picture after all the awards out in the foyer with all of the groups. Okay, so our next group is our Middle School Media Contest, and all of these students just happen to be from the same school, because we have one teacher, Ms. Albrecht, who really encouraged her students to enter and push them to the next level. So we have third place Savannah Hind. And I know I'm going to not pronounce this name right, but it's Nadella's, is that it? Nadella's, Huitis, Detress. Our second place winner, and our first place winner is Emma Bursler. And Ms. Albrecht. Okay, and our last is our Teacher Door Decorating, and I just wanted to say, we had, this is our second year doing this contest, and we, out of 11 elementary schools and crest, we had nine schools to participate in this door decorating contest this year. It was awesome. Our, we had a third place tie between Central Ridge Elementary, who did the, the topic was "There's Nothing Comical About Drugs," and Ms. Mays from Rock Crusher Elementary, "Kiddos, Do You Love Me, Do You Promise?" And that was our third place winners. So ladies, come on up if you're here. Our second place winner was Ms. Salani from Embarness Primary with "Pre-K Scares the Drugs Away." Our first place winner actually could not be with us today due to, she was, she was out of, out of pocket today, we'll just say, but our first place winner is from Floral City Elementary, and is there a representative here? Perfect. And that was Ms. Collins, Ms. Deborah Collins from Floral City, and I wish you could have seen this one, because it was very, it was really unique. It was "Your Body Is a Work of Art," and how perfect, because she was, is an art teacher, so. Thank you again to everyone, and just a reminder, we are gonna do a big group picture out, so if everybody can exit quietly, I would, that would be appreciated. Thank you so much, and again, for letting us do the things that we do, and we are excited about this. We sweep the board. Today, I would like to hand out or pass out and recognize some of our staff and for the Superintendent's Making a Difference Award, and the first one goes to three individuals from Encanto Middle School. As I call your name, would you please come forward? Mr. Kyle Jakes, Assistant Principal. Coach Nick Philippi, PE teacher. And Deputy Joe Gentile, School Resource Officer. On October 29th, administration was called to a classroom to assist with an emergency. Among those to arrive were these three gentlemen. They entered the classroom and observed that guest speaker, Mr. Luke Simmons, and he's okay with I mentioning his name, because he was trying to get here today, had collapsed in the classroom. Deputy Gentile began CPR, Coach Philippi retrieved the nearby AED, and Mr. Jakes applied the AED to Mr. Simmons. These three gentlemen continued with CPR and monitored the AED and Mr. Simmons until EMS arrived. Thank you to Mr. Jakes, Coach Philippi, and Deputy Gentile for your quick actions and heroic efforts in assisting Mr. Simmons that we believe saved his life, so thank you for being with us. This next award goes to teachers from Citrus Springs Elementary School, so as I call your name, would you please come forward? Gina Semenera. Barbara Turner. Julie Dilks. Lindsay Downing. Jennifer Hess. And Brianna Elsie. And before I read why we brought them forward today, when we walked through the schools, you know, we're mandated by the state of Florida for class size amendment, so as we walk through the classrooms, we're always counting students, and when I walked in classrooms, I was thinking, boy, did we mess this one up this year, but I just wanted to talk about and how these ladies represent excellence in the field of education. Earlier in the year, Citrus Springs Elementary School had a third grade teacher resign to teach for Florida Virtual School, leaving a full class of students without a certified teacher and no applicants for that position. Without hesitation, Gina, Barbara, and Julie suggested they take all the students into their already full classrooms. Quick to respond with 100% support of the plan were Lindsay, Jennifer, and Brianna, who graciously welcomed students from the newly dissolved rooms. In addition to taking on more students, Barbara, Gina, and Julie agreed to open the wall between the classrooms and a long-term sub to their group, and take on 50 children amongst themselves to save any other classroom from being overwhelmed. These remarkable educators were adamant that their third graders would not go without a certified teacher, and thus made this innovative classroom idea a reality. The flexibility and dedication exhibited shows unmatched character and a genuine passion for the education of their hogs. To say they are making a difference is certainly an understatement. Thank you for what you do every single day. Stretch it up, Terry. Now, it adds up to, Mr. Thomas Kennedy, talking beginning of meeting about taking offense, jumping first, and you all certainly exhibit, and we believe it sets the county all so we can refer to it closer. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Here, here. Mr. Stevens, is this for your, oh, I'm there. Give me this up.
Yes. Good afternoon. I would like to introduce to you someone who doesn't really need an introduction, but we have with us Dave Stevens, who is the Executive Director of the Florida School Board's Insurance Trust, and the Florida School Board's Insurance Trust represents us, as you know, in the areas of property and casualty insurance, workers' comp, litigation, and several other things. Mrs. Bryant represents you all on the FSBIT board as well. We've worked with them for many years, they're very, very responsive to our needs. I appreciate the fact that he's here with us today, and he has an award that he would like to present to the school board and to our superintendent.
Thank you, Sherry. Little disclaimer, first things first, I had no input into this award, okay, so there's no bias, even though everybody at FSBIT knows that I think Citrus County is absolutely the best school district in the state. You couldn't go to a better place to get an education than right here in Citrus County. With all that said, there's about 34 data points that go into this award, and it is really tough to get this award. We have some outstanding risk management programs within FSBIT, and Citrus County is always right there, always right there for the best of the best, and this year, you got the best of the best. Sherry, I'd like for you to come back up if you could, please. Sherry, and her entire department does an excellent job, and really, when you translate this, and I can't give you a hard dollar figure, but this is easily, they save you easily $200,000, $300,000 a year when they have an excellent program like this, so they really deserve some good kudos. They couldn't do it without the su, without the support of the superintendent and the board, though. You just need to realize, it's a team effort, the entire administration, the board, the superintendent, to get this award, and it is not easy, okay, to get this. This is the Florida School Board's Insurance Trust, Best of the Best Risk Management Program, and it goes to Citrus County School District, 2018.
You're not getting out of that.
I had no input into this award, okay? So there was no bias, even though everybody at FSBIT knows that I think Citrus County is absolutely the best school district in the state. You couldn't go to a better place to get an education than right here in Citrus County. With all that said, there's about 34 data points that go into this award. And it is really tough to get this award. We have some outstanding risk management programs within FSBIT. And Citrus County is always right there, always right there for the best of the best. And this year, you got the best of the best. And Sherry, I'd like for you to come back up if you could, please. Sherry and her entire department does an excellent job. And really, when you translate this, and I can't give you a hard dollar figure, but this is easily, they save you easily $200,000, $300,000 a year when they have an excellent program like this. So they really deserve some good kudos. They couldn't do it without the support of the superintendent and the board, though. You just need to realize it's a team effort, the entire administration, the board, the superintendent, to get this award. And it is not easy, okay, to get this. This is the Florida School Board's Insurance Trust Best of the Best Risk Management Program. And it goes to Citrus County School District, 2018.
Ginger, come, Ginger. Johnny, Johnny, Johnny. Yeah, the superintendent said so. Ed, you are right in front of me. This one's very special to all of us, and I'll share a little bit afterwards. But we're going to turn this over to Florida School Board Association's Educational Director, I believe.
Director of Leadership Services.
Thank you.
Basically, I work with school board members and their professional development. And this is a very, first of all, I have to say, it is my pleasure to be here to watch what happens in this boardroom, to hear what Thomas said to start off the board meeting. You know, your board is not recognized as a master board because you haven't gone through the master board training. But let me just tell you one thing. I need you to do that because I need examples of boards that do the right thing and are focused on the most important thing, and that's students. And you guys exemplify that. And, you know, you could be my poster child for master boards. But I, it is just a pleasure to be here. As a school board member, many states have requirements for their school board members to get professional development training. The state of Florida does not. They have rules about everything else but that. But FSBA offers professional development for school board members. And you have the opportunity to become what we call a certified board member. And that means that you go through 96 hours of professional development training on your own time. You find ways to get to the forums that we have, to the trainings that we have. And basically, what this does is shows to your community that you are committed to learning about this, as Thomas said at the beginning of your meeting, most important job that you have. They want to do it as best that they can and have at their fingertips the latest research, advice, knowledge that we can give them. So it is my pleasure to have Ms. Sandy Counts, if you will come down. You know, when you first meet your new school board members, I can always get an idea. And I knew Sandy Counts was going to be one of those that was going to be a wonderful example of what a school board member should be. But Sandy has earned her Certified Board Member Award. She joins Thomas Kennedy and Ms. Ginger Bryant. And it's just a testament to your school district that they care enough to go through and do this. So it is my pleasure to present to you this lovely plaque and this lovely pin. Doesn't say kids first, but it means that you do that.
Yes.
So here is your plaque. Here is your pin. And this is one where you do need to go up and hide it.
Thank you. I'm going to miss the forums that we mentioned. It was really, really inspiring.
Well, we're doing the finance one again in February.
Well, don't go anywhere. Come here because I'm not having you leave without you taking one, too.
Oh, please, thank you.
Ms. Tina knows this, but for those of you who don't, when I came onto this board, it really is going to be nine years now. I mean, it's, I'm starting mine now, it's been eight years ago. There was a very clear expectation from particularly the two board members that are here, Ms. Bryant and Ms. Powers. You know, they'd be willing to listen to me, but I need to go get some training. And they had every expectation that I needed to be a certified board member and that we needed to do this. So I'm grateful for what you do. We are grateful because we are better board members because of the training of Florida School Board Association.
That's obvious. Years passed when I was doing master board training. And it's just a pleasure to see. And you guys are very, very lucky. Thank you.
Thank you. Go Gators.
It would probably be wise to point out that Ms. Powers has the certified board member training as do I, but the 11 hours that you have to submit your paperwork for is not in you. I've done like 30 hours this year. But I don't know, I can't speak for you, Ms. Powers.
And we've been before. And what they do now is when you have a new person elected to the board, they have to start all over again. So all of us who were on the board were certified board and did all the substantial stuff. Did it all over again.
We've never been a certified board.
We, actually, we were, we've got that. The three of us were master board, were a master board together with the superintendent, but not the current of us, so yeah.
You're a certified board member, though. You were a certified board member one time as was I. So that was the 96 hours.
Yeah, and I know that you guys have the points. It's, as Ms. Tina would remind us, we need to just make sure we get our papers in.
And that's all I'm, I want to make sure that I don't, you know, leave anybody out because you do have board members that have gone through that training and do care. It's just, you know, in the midst of everything else that you have to do, you have to take a few minutes and submit points and do those kinds of things. And it's not always the most convenient thing to do, so.
And it's the business model of the FSBA.
That's right.
And I just have to go by what you guys tell me to do. So thank you very much. Happy holidays, and I look forward to working with each of you in the future.
Thank you so much. And thank you for making the drive down to do that. We appreciate it. Okay, with that, Mr. Heber, approve an addendum to provide an agreement between Nature Coast EMS, the American Heart Association, and the Citrus County School. Dr. Heber, I'm sorry.
Yes, I move approval to that. I know that if there are any questions, I do have Ms. Carnavale here to answer any questions that the board might have on that.
Go ahead. I have some questions. So I just wanted to review the three areas of training and the card. You know, I know the cost has gone up. Nature Coast EMS is part of ours. And, you know, that's, you know, that's not an issue with me. But I just wanted to make sure because I had spoken to some teachers that didn't have all three of the trainings. And I think that that's kind of the way it's going, though, now, right? Is to be trained in AED as well as first aid and CPR. But I just want to get a little clarification on how that's being done. And if the card, if someone is trained in just CPR, are they still certified with this card? Or what do they, what would they receive?
Now, the price went up because of American Heart Association, not necessarily the Nature Coast EMS. They were just a training center. But this is the price for American Heart Association card across the board is now $25. So it's not Nature Coast who did it. But depending on the class you take, you can take a CPR adult-only course, a CPR pediatrics-only course, a CPR infant-only course, a first aid course, any of that. No matter what the card is, it will cost $25 to get that card. For us, the courses that we offer are CPR for adult, child, and infant, AED, and first aid inclusive. When we first got our AEDs, we did some quick training for administrators because we wanted them to be aware of CPR and AED usage. So we did CPR and AED only for them, just for time's sake because that's more like a two and a half to three hour course versus an all-day course. So that our administrators got that. We had some administrators signing up for the full day course because they also wanted first aid. Years ago, before I got here, the coaches were only doing CPR and AED training. But since then, they're now taking the full course to CPR, AED, and first aid because as you all know, when you're a coach out there by yourself and a kid gets hurt, first aid is a very important tool to have out there when you're not just applying Band-Aids, but you might have a sprain or break or something like that. So those are the courses that we offer. We offer at least monthly courses, sometimes bi-monthly, especially at the end of May. I mean, the end of the school year, the beginning of the school year. There's a very big demand for those courses because coaches have to have them. And people, you know, some of them have it in their job requirements, like the health room attendance and people back to the clinic.
And so how many of our teachers are AED certified?
I can't tell you how many teachers. I can tell you how many district personnel.
But a teacher could do AED.
A teacher could do the class if their administrator approves them to. But overall district personnel, this past year, we trained 459 staff members in the district in first aid, CPR.
And all three?
Except for, minus the administrators, yes. Everybody else took all three.
And how many coaches have done it?
I can't tell you every single coach has done it. And that would be up to the athletic director, but we offer it up to all the coaches. And that's why I do like one before school even starts. We have one, we have one the day after school ends every year just because coaches, if they're instructors, they can't always get out of their classrooms. But most, I'm going to bargain to say, most of the coaches have because it is a requirement, so.
So on the contract that was modified, the $25 per card, though, and I guess that was part of my question, too, is that, is it, so if you're CPR, AED, and first aid, it's three cards?
It's one card. It's all printed on the same card.
Okay.
I'll say $25 for the whole thing. But if you choose to only take the CPR class, like with the administrator, it'll still be $25. So I'm trying to get everybody to take everything together.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
Okay, I just want to make a comment, if you don't mind. Because I once committees with Pam, and Pam does such incredibly good job, so clear, you know what's happening, you know, in the district, and all the schools, you have the information you need to be able to do what you need to do. So I really appreciate your expertise.
Thank you.
And I want to echo that as well because many times I'll email you, call you with questions, and you are, you are the most professional, but you really care about making sure that you're protecting our students, their health, and our staff's health. And we are very grateful for that. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I believe we approve the addendum to the provider agreement between Nature Coast EMS and American Heart Association and the Citrus County School Board.
Senator.
I have a motion by Ms. Counts, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the addendum to the provider agreement between Nature Coast EMS, American Heart Association, I'm sorry, the American Heart Association and the Citrus County School Board. Any comments, questions? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion approved, five zero.
Next, I'd like to ask for approval of the 2018-19 School Improvement Plans for AES, CRE, CHS, CSE, CSM, CREST, CRH, CRMS, CRP, FCE, FRE, HES, IMS, IPS, LHS, LMS, LPS, TGE, RCE, SERMI, and WTC. And I've asked Ms. Douglas and Ms. Humboldt to be here to address any questions you have on our school improvement plan.
As I pulled that in, I did want some things addressed. And luckily, with our agenda, we have the Florida Health District Award that was given, red ribbon week. And then there are other things that I've attended, all involving safety, which Doug attends all the time and is part of making plans for. And with me, I attend the mental health and the physical wellness groups and meetings. And here, I pulled this because I wanted mental health and physical health and safety to be part of this year's school improvement plan. And I know the statement back to me was, well, it's going to be part of next year's. And I agree, you know, it's going to be part of next year's. But the state sort of mentioned to us and gave us money to be sure with the health and with the safety and the mental health that be done. And I think that it's sort of like that be done now. You're working on it now. I know you go down and you work on it now. I know I work every single week on it, hours a week. So I think it should be part of the school improvement plan stated that this is what we're doing. And therefore, I would not like to see the plans yet approved. They're great plans. We just need a couple more additions, I feel. And then bring it back. And then we can approve everything. And I feel like we've done our job without having those two areas as part of the school improvement plan. I feel like we haven't done our job. And I don't ever want to feel like that I'm not doing my job and I'm supposed to be doing so. That is why I pulled it.
And I just want to talk to you for a moment about our school improvement planning process. So we start the process, of course, with our comprehensive needs assessment, which is ongoing. We are constantly reviewing our achievement data, discipline data, attendance data, school climate data. And our strategies are prioritized based on strategic focused planning with our school improvement planning team with stakeholders. This is always ongoing. And so for this process, the focus is very well established in our district. And research suggests that including extensive list of priority areas within the school improvement plan itself can diminish its effectiveness on improving student achievement. With that being said, we are fortunate to not have any DRF schools in our district, therefore allowing us to utilize a plan that is straightforward, explicit, and very focused. We also know that there are many other requirements that are necessary in order to improve student achievement. For example, each school is required to submit a safe school plan to our risk management department. We believe that safety is of utmost importance and feel that that component of improving the school climate is addressed in the school safety plan. Another example would be our focus on counseling, school-based mental health programs, and mentoring services. This is addressed in our Title I alignment document that serves as an addendum to our actual school improvement plan. Since Title I, ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, requires 10 other components in the school improvement process itself, we created an alignment tool, also for high school, that easily allows the schools to document additional strategies that support increased student achievement. And I'd also like to mention that as we move on to the upcoming school year, the plans and requirements are going to change. Keep in mind that the state requirements will be more stringent for us because we are going to be required, in addition, if we had any DRF schools, which once again, we're fortunate not to, we will also have to create a state devised plan if any of our subgroups go below 40%. So there are a lot of things with the upcoming school year that will focus on the actual school improvement plan itself. So I just wanted to bring light those thoughts.
Can I understand what you're saying? I really do. It's just that to me, it's so important. It's like basic to all things, that the students are provided with safety, that the students are provided with physical and mental health, number one. And of course, after that, we go into the reading, writing, arithmetic, all of that. But those other two are important. And I would like to see them in the improvement plan so it shows we're working on this. Because I know Doug, and I know I work every single week, hours, to be able to do that. And in fact, it's both our, it's naturally what we've always done, I think, all of our lives. And so very, very important to us. So I would ask that those two things be included in the improvement plan.
Ms. Powers, just to be clear, I don't want people to think we're not addressing that. SNAP is addressing it.
Oh, I understand.
There is a school safe school plan. But you're suggesting we have a safe school plan. And then part of the school improvement plan be another safe school plan. And from the staff's perspective, when we mention things in too many different documents and things get changed, then there's confusion as to what people were supposed to be doing. That's why the process, there's a school improvement plan, and there's a safe school plan, and then we also address mental health in the Title I plan. That's why all of those things come together. But when we start putting, when we start duplicating things in different plans, somebody better make sure they're keeping track of all the different places that is because then you end up having one change and it becomes in another document you have conflicting things.
Well, when it's a school improvement plan, that's an overall, it's a general thing. Then you have to break it down and the other plans you're talking about.
Safety plans are part of that, but they're not in the actual school improvement plan.
But I want to, I personally, maybe just because of training of 30, 40 years, I want to see that as part of it. So we're saying to the public, look, this is what we're doing, you know? It's very simple to read here. And I can go and read the other two plans you talked about. It's very, very involved. But that's my point. That's what I would like to see. To me, it's incomplete without those two areas addressed.
And did I understand, Ms. Powers, that it will be addressed in the next year?
Next year, will it?
I don't know that piece for sure. I know the improvement plan piece with the achievement goals will be addressed.
And what Ms. Tina was saying, I said, well, we'll address that next year. And that's fine. It's just, I don't know whether next year I want to address now because that's what I feel is the part of this, that's what we should be doing. And I do understand your point of view, believe me, I do, because I've written plans like that year after year after year when I was a counselor or a teacher. I really understand what you're saying. But I want to be sure I'm doing my job. And my job, I feel, is to be sure those two things are included in the improvement plan.
Um, question if I can, unless I don't want to step over any of the other ones. When, there, usually there's a deadline for our, for these plans to be submitted. When is, do we have a deadline for that or when do those need to be submitted to the state by?
This past, this past year, they were due to the district office in September and.
For these particular ones?
Yeah. We don't have to because we are not a DRF school. We actually are sharing with the board members our school improvement plan, but we don't have to have that plan in place because we don't have a DRF school.
Okay, that's right. Cause this process has changed. So this year, we, this is us approving it for our, this plan is one we're approving for ourselves.
Yes.
Next year, I think, um, you and I had a conversation that there'll be a new rubric. We probably, a significant number of our schools may, we'll just try and say it that way, will need to have, we will probably be mandated to have a state done SIP school improvement plan.
And that state mandated school improvement plan, it's my understanding, they'll have all the components of that Title I alignment document in that plan.
So then I guess then the question I would just say is, um, trying to follow Ms. Powers' thought. What would, what would we include in the mental health plan? How would we include it into the SI, into the school improvement plan, that portion? Do we just include what we're doing already in another plan and just reference it? How do, because I'm not saying I'm not open to it. I just don't know how that looks. Cause this plan, I think, we're, we're down to about three or four pages now.
Yes, and the alignment document, it serves as an addendum to the school improvement plan. It's required to have these pieces in there. It really is part of the school improvement plan.
But it's an addendum, as you say, it's something extra. And I was, uh, talking with a couple of schools and what we were doing is they would have like three main points that had already been down for school improvement. And then they would put number four, number five, the safety and the mental and physical health. And that to me seemed to be a beautiful way of doing it. So, and that's what I'm like actually to see done. You don't have to go into writing, writing an encyclopedia on it. You just have to put in the information says this, we address this. I forgot to say this. But we address it because we believe it's right to address the safety and the physical and mental health. It's right to address.
Can I just have a question? But just a question on the safety. Are we able to do that? Because isn't the safety considered not an open document for the public?
Oh, it's not, it's not, no, no, it's not, not a, a list of all the things located in the school system. It's the basic approach to safety, like Alice, like Alice.
It certainly talk about what we do as whole in this school district.
And I want the public to have confidence in us that we are covering it because I think we do cover it, but I want them to see in, in our thinking that this is covered, that we're always there and we're going to focus those heads. It's never gonna go away because we believe it.
We approved, I believe, was it part of our mental health plan or part of our, there was a plan we approved, I believe, at the last meeting or the meeting before last, I thought regarding this issue. And I wasn't sure what.
In August, you approved the mental health plan.
Mental health plan.
This is your mental health plan that Ms. Humble led that team, which is what we were doing as a district.
So then, Ms. Powers, is there, is there anything in addition to that mental health plan that we'd need to have in this?
That's what I'm saying.
And I'm just trying to understand, that's all.
Yeah, right. The, uh, schools, the Pam, the improvement plan, we'd like to have three different levels of it. What they did was just put like four, one, five, we were, uh, covered the safety and covered the mental and physical health. That worked beautifully. We have done a very involved mental health plan. That is doing a very involved safety plan. Those are addendums, those are extras, those are explanations beyond what the basic safety is. Uh, I want the basic safety in there. So we tell ourselves, we tell the school system, we tell the public, we consider this to be very important and here it is as part of the school improvement plan. I cannot see writing the school improvement plan without addressing those two basic areas of life.
I tend to agree. I mean, I think that we're doing so much there, uh, there wouldn't be any, I don't see what harm is with us referencing it in the school improvement plan. And make sure these, um, school advisory councils who approve the plan, review it, make sure they know this is a part of, um, you know, the priorities. I, I don't think there's any harm in doing it, but we're in, we're almost halfway through our school year. In two months, my staff will start preparing next year's plan. So we're gonna go back and we're gonna be revising this year's plan as we're preparing next year's plan. The reality is, that doesn't make any sense to the common person.
Well, actually.
When we have addressed the issues you're talking about, that they're not in the plan, they're an addendum to the plan. That's a matter of semantics to me.
No one, no one pays attention to it, didn't.
Yeah.
But I, well, we do.
And we'd be better.
And I'm not sure that, that these specific things belong in a school improvement plan because when you get into the last column of the school improvement plan, we recognize it, we've got the curriculum and some of this stuff is confidential when you talk about mental health and safety. And so when we put it out in the improvement plan, then we're asking our, our schools to show, all right, we've got this need. Well, we recognize the need with these other plans that we already have as addendums. But then you've gotta show improvement and you've gotta say how you improved and how much you improved. So that kind, I'm not sure that we can really, um, what we expect from a school improvement plan, show a deficiency and what are we gonna do to improve it and how are we going to do it? And what level of improvement are we looking for? I'm looking at, at the statistics that we do on a school improvement plan. We have math scores. Well, what are we gonna do to improve our math scores? We're gonna implement this. And then what degree of improvement are we looking, we're looking for, um, a 12% improvement, improvement. And then when they fill out all that columns in the school improvement plan, I don't know how they can do that when we say safety and mental health.
We do it already in terms of keeping track of.
Yeah. But I'm not sure it belongs, other than an addendum to a school improvement plan.
And to be an addendum means second class?
No, it doesn't at all. Yes, sometimes it's a, sometimes those addendums are the driving force.
But the explanation was in, uh, the pain, there was a term used.
Plan do study.
I'm not, on, on my point, Mr. Mullin, I'm not saying we go back in and redo this plan that's already approved. I mean, it's, we're looking to approve. I think that there's value to looking at how we're going to do next year's plan and if we're gonna add more chapters to it for next year. That's, that's where I'm coming.
Mr. Dr. Hebert, um, you've been here long enough. There, there's been some times we've called school improvement plans and then there was one time, we used to call it something else rather than improving.
Do you guys are enhancement council?
No, that's the council. But there's, there is a.
Years ago, we called it the Hainville objective.
Yeah, and that, you remember that? Okay, now you're really showing your age. But there was another term.
Differentiated accountability, we, we used, we did that.
School, yeah, maybe it was school accountability plan.
Accountability plan, called differentiated accountability.
Yeah, I think that was the other one.
Ms. Douglas just wanted to share what that document was that she just created.
And I just want to reassure you all that I am not saying that any of these things are not important. I believe that safety is extremely important and of course, mental health, counseling, mentoring, school-based counseling, all of that is important as well. And this alignment document really is part of our school improvement plan. It is required by ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. So I just wanted to give you an example of exactly, um, what is in that alignment document. And I don't know if you can see that. Can you see that? Okay. So you can read through that this is required for all of our Title I schools. We did not have it in place for high school, but now we have this in place with high school and we're going to meet with the high school leadership teams and their SAC councils to talk about the mental health piece. So that really is with the SIP plan, it's just not part of the actual living document that teachers take to their rooms. They can look at that achievement data and then they know what strategies they need to implement and what professional development needs to happen.
And so we are keeping track of all of this, as you say. Again, the statement is more upfront, telling everyone, we are doing this and not this.
Absolutely. We are doing it. And this is very explicit and detailed and it is attached.
Ms. Powers, is there a, um, is there a bullet like this that we could include in each of the plans that would accommodate what you're, because I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm wanting to work with you on it.
I think you're exactly right. As I said, a, a couple of schools I talked with, they just very quickly, um, they stepped four and five to include everything, done, covered everything. So I think that's, that's totally possible and should be done. And we'll cover this year. We're not repeating anything, uh, for next year. Next year, we'll, we'll do a plan, but we'll cover this year and next year, uh, when next year comes.
For Mr. Mullin's understanding, just because I understand, I think what he's concerned with, it doesn't sound like you're asking for anything different than what we're doing, but you're wanting it to be documented that we're doing.
Exactly.
So am I correct in that understanding?
Very good.
So is there a way maybe we can capture that?
We have that in place, Mr. Kennedy. That's what we're saying, the alignment document does.
But it's in place.
Is there any way to, to make that, lift that out in some way?
We can just attach it. I mean, it's all right there. It's already done.
As you said, it's, it's four, four and five. So we take the, because they're not, maybe you read the SACs of what we're doing and you go, oh, yeah, we're on the right page. Even though I know it's an addendum, I want to know that it's right out front so everyone can see it. And.
Is it, is it possible to put a bullet in each of the, each of the plans that references then?
We, we would send it back to the enhancement.
It, it has to go, and no, I'm saying.
My staff's not gonna change a school's plan.
No, no, no. Can we, could we at this point, through a motion, have that, have that added and then included?
Go back and have the school add their plan, but I don't, you're making a motion for us to add something to somebody else's plan. I don't know what we would add.
Well, I guess, cause I'm thinking, I didn't know if we had the authority within, because it lies with us for approval, for us to add that.
I wouldn't be comfortable adding things to the.
How would they, if they change, they would have to go back?
It has to go back. Okay. No, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand of, of what we, where, what the process will be.
And Thomas, as I mentioned, several schools did that very thing. They added to the, uh, enhancement council added to it.
When did they add it to it? Before they submitted this for their final approval? I think it was. Because I, I mean, we just did it. So, so, but now we'd be asking schools that didn't do that to go back.
There are some that did. I was on the committee, the ones that I'm on the committee of, that they had.
And again, I go to that last column because that's where you can measure how much you improved. Um, and if we, if we do anything to these documents that are already up for approval, I, I'm not gonna compare an apple and an orange. If, if these things have a full school year to improve and then we throw something at them in January when they come back and they've only got a couple of months. I, I don't count May. May, the state takes away from our classroom because of the state testing. So they've got a couple of months to come up with that last column. And I don't, I don't think that would be for your personal.
And some of them are doing it right now. I mean, I was a counselor for many years and that was being done every single place.
Oh, and, and I, I'm gonna tell you, it's not in their group plan, but it's being done in our schools, every one of them. And I, I.
So there's no problem with coming up with it because it's being done right now. The only thing that this, uh, Thomas said, you know, add them in, like you said, put two bullets, but I did numbers four and five.
Yeah.
Same thing.
The, the concern that I think I have that I'm hearing though from staff is, if we do not approve this, the process will be that it has to go back to staff for them to now extend back to the administrators, back to the school enhancement councils. I don't think most of them mean until January, in some cases February. And Mr. Mullin's saying his, he's gonna be having staff be working on that already. So it, he, I mean, really what we're doing is just not approving our school improvement plans is what we'll be doing. And, and, and that. But then that means in essence, we're not improving anything. We're holding it up for that.
I'll need to go back and get it revised. I don't think there should be a date or a due time that says, okay, you have to do that, pass it now. We don't have to get it right. We just have to pass it. And I don't like that. I don't feel good about it. Uh, I would personally want to see those two big areas included in it because I want to say I did the job correctly. And I think about that, the job is not done yet.
But, but staff time at the schools will be taken away to do that.
I saw one person sit down and do this and they didn't take more than 30 minutes. The people who know what they're doing can do it like that.
Okay, so here's my question. We've always approved these school improvement plans?
That is.
Year, after year, years. And, and we've always done this. We've always cared about safety.
Yeah. But I think right now it's much more important as, as Doug is going to, as I go with it, it's really being a focus on, it's happening somewhere in the school. Tragedies occur and a lot of them involve mental health because people are had, are having problems or they act out and act out sometimes with, with the weapons and sometimes people are killed. Um, so that's why it's more important now than it was. It was always important, but it was just addressed, needed to be addressed.
I, I just want to share also with the safety piece. I would want Mr. Bishop and the Surgeonage's Department to be involved with what that statement might be. Cause I don't know what, what we need.
There's so, so much of that in the sa, uh, school safety plan that is not a matter of public record. So what we're, what we're, what I think I'm hearing in the conversation here this evening is, we're looking to take public, information that's exempt from public record and put it in a public record document.
Not at all, not at all.
So we just need, for my staff, I just need clarification as to what exactly is you're looking for. So we can include whether we're gonna go back to the enhancement councils, have them do either this year or vote forward. I just need to have a clear understanding as to what it is, what we have in plan. Cause I certainly want to have a conversation with the grad school to vet it, to make sure that we're not, uh, breaking any kind of public record.
Excuse me, I, I do want to just share something. Um, research and accountability is shared with the superintendent that the state does need by February our SIPs, um, to be, uh, submitted. And they need to be submitted for the plans to be verified by the state for their, so that that process can continue. So the, the quickest, I mean, at this point, it sounds like if, the only thing we could do is if there isn't a vote tonight to approve this, then we would have to table it for the next meeting. And that would have to be done by them. But the problem is.
There's no school between then and now.
There's no school between and there's no enhancement council meetings between now and then. So.
And I think Ms. Ms. Powers has brought up a wonderful idea and I know that we will press forward and make sure that happens in our, in our next years. And if, we may just have to let this go.
So with that, I don't think I've had a motion so that we can at least decide where, where our votes gonna fall. So someone wants to make a motion?
I have a motion that we approve the 218, 219 school improvement plans for AES, CRE, CHS, CSE, CSM, Crest, CRH, CRMS, CRP, FCE, FRE, HES, IMS, IPS, LHS, LMS, SPS, LPS, PGE, RCE, SERMI and WTC.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Counts, a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the 2018, 2019 school improvement plans for the schools as mentioned. I'm not gonna do it to everybody yet. So with that, we, we can continue, but I need to get that, uh, on there unless somebody wants to call the question or.
I just want to make the same, because I, I can support that because I think, uh, by voting forward, I'm not doing a job enough to.
I understand.
And I, and I respect that. And I, I'm, I'm, my only feeling, I'm sorry, my only feeling is, is that I, I, I agree with you. It should be, it sounds like we can make sure that conversation takes place that's included in the future. I'm worried about staff trying to figure that out with, with the enhancement council plans, but, um.
And I just want to clarify, our research, our plans aren't, aren't submitted to the state. Research accountability and items on form is, uh, verified and, and being done. So definitely.
Anybody else had something before? Okay. With that, um, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
It passes four to one. And Ms. Powers, it's why we value you so much because I know that everyone has heard, this will be in there.
Thank you.
Is that some side news, Grace?
Uh, with that, we'll move on to Human Resources, Ms. Swain.
Good afternoon. I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the golden rod.
I move to approve the instructional and support recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Counts to approve the instructional and support recommendations. Any questions, comments, reflections? Any questions, comments, reflections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approves five to zero.
I ask the board to approve Larry Buddy Grant to be appointed to the position of district police chief.
I'm going to approve Larry Buddy Grant being appointed to the position of district police chief. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the new position for district police chief. And I'm sorry, did we actually, I'm sorry. Did we name?
To approve.
To approve, yeah, I'm just going to make sure. To approve Larry Buddy Grant to be approved for the position of district police chief and superintendent.
I want to address this before you all have a discussion or vote because as usual, there's several rumors running around the county. So, I want to be clear about this position.
Yeah, just.
I'd like to move forward this position tonight, and I want to be clear what the position is about. And it's not about going out and hiring staff. It's not about opening our police force. It's about getting some type of manual developed that talks about our protocols, our processes, our operating procedures, and we need to know options that we may have to choose from at the end of session. It was clear last week, the Commission of Education spoke to superintendents. I was in a meeting with Sheriff Gaultieri and then also with some of Doug's comments that we've heard from the commission that we do believe that we may be tasked with some future mandates in adding staff to our campuses. Right now, we are being charged approximately $96,000 for SRO. And as you all know in past history, that legislators have a tendency to put things in place that are not fully funded. So, I feel like that as your superintendent, as your leader of this district, I am in charge of the safety of our school system. I believe that moving forward, certainly sort of statement out to our parents and our kids that we do believe that safety is our number one priority. We're not buying guns. We're not buying cars. We're not buying radios. If this person would just be here to set up what we need to look at now and then. I don't know where the commission will go. The recommendation will go with legislation. Legislation will start till March. That means that we won't have anything finalized until probably till the end of April. And I refuse to get in the vote that we got in last year where we opened the school the first day and we did not know and have no guarantee of getting SRO on every campus. Now, and to be very clear, and I know this board is in agreement, this is not to replace the SRO program. Because the minute this came out, before Sam was trying to replace the SRO program. To me, this would be an expansion. It would be to enhance our current security on our campuses. If we're required to have a second person, we may need to do that anyway. So, it's not to replace that program. I believe that there's been comments on the commission that what is the true role of an SRO? Because I know sometimes they talk about should they really be teaching classes or should their focus be strictly for security? I believe that what we do as our second person would be strictly for security on our campus. Because SROs build relationships, they mentor our kids, they, I know Ms. Powers hates this word, they count to our kids. And they do, they build a relationship with the kids that we certainly want them to have. So, this would certainly be an expansion to what we currently do, not to replace it. So, with that, answer any questions that you all may have or comments.
I understand that, that we need this paperwork. But what I would like to see, if we do move forward for this when the reports come in, that we do have a posting like we normally do for all of our hires and have, have applications and interviews with others so that we're not saying, right? We set up all of these numbers and stuff like that for the future. And we now need this step to continue with what we started. But if we're going to implement our own police force, then I would like to see it follow the same protocols that we do with our other hires and that's post the job and have people.
I agree.
Hey, Julie, a question, Mr. Bradshaw. Is that within authority though of the school board to be able to dictate that? I thought that that would be a recommendation of superintendent, how they do that. So, that's, the board doesn't have that authority.
But we approve what she points, but this one, I don't think there was any posting or anything.
You say she doesn't have to though. She never does.
That's what I was saying. That's what I heard.
But I heard, yeah, I understand. I just, I just don't want to confuse what, what our authorities are. As we talked about earlier, our school board association is very clear about staying in our lanes. And I, I, we can, we can always deny a recommendation for good cause, but only for good cause.
Yeah.
You know.
I recognize that. And I don't think we could do much better than Mr. Grant for something like, if we could go to some other country. But he's an excellent.
Well, we are in the greatest country in the world. So, you know.
Hey, we're great.
Well, I've got a couple of questions. And you know, I guess the timing is really what, what throws me off the most, you know, with, not really sure why we're at this point right now. We have legislation that's going to be coming down. There's going to be changes that will be occurring, I feel strongly about. But I just think it provides a lot of uncertainty when we look at the timing of this and the message that it sends. It, it sends the message that we are looking towards our own police force. And I know Ms. Henry said that, you said you're not working in that direction, right? I mean, we're, we're working on continuing with school resource officers in the sheriff's office. Is that right? So.
And Ms., let me just say, and I, maybe I sometimes confuse words. And when I say police force, I look at if we have to hire a second officer for every campus and we have to manage that, that's got to be under someone who I believe is qualified, certified to run. And you may have to that point called a police force. But our intent with this position right now is just to get us to where we would need to be if we're mandated. And Doug, Mr. Dogg, knows this better than I do. I don't know what the commission will, their final recommendation. I don't know what legislators will require of us. But I know that it will, and I shouldn't say won't be. I believe that whatever's put into law will not be fully funded. And I don't believe that this school district can afford to hire SROs which include their cars, a 251-day contract. My, I would look at this as a 180-day contract, no vehicles, and we would still have to uniform them. But I know that other school districts are looking at what we're doing because they cannot afford a second SRO on every campus. So, yes, so your, my answer is, to me, it would be in a partnership with the SROs.
Right. But isn't, I mean, going along with what you said, we really don't know what's going to be coming down the pipe. And we don't know what to expect. And so, you know, I would much rather wait until we're, we have to make the decision to hire a police chief or to hire a director of safety and security, whatever we wanted to call that position. I just think it's a little premature to look at this amount of money to hire a sworn police chief that we say is not going to be policing or taking over policing duties. I think it, it provides questions. I mean, if we have a difficulty in working with the sheriff now, I think this is only going to add to that and, and add to the confusion of who's responsible for what. And so, with that, I, I think it's prudent for us as a board to wait on this, on this issue. Wait until we know what's going to be required. If we have to have guardians, if we're going to go the guardian route, you know, there very much will need to be someone who will need to oversee a guardian program. But does that person need to be in a sworn position? Does it, do we need to have our own police department? That's what we are doing by hiring this person. We are staffing a police department. There are no other police departments in Citrus County. We have a sheriff's office. We have a contract for school resource officers to provide safety and security for our schools. Philosophically, I believe this is the community's responsibility to protect our students. We have a county commission that has been very good to the school district in supporting this mission of a community policing, of a concept that is we want students to be safe when they're in school and when they're out of school. And so, we have a commitment from the county commission. I mean, I've got concerns that by going this route, is the message that we're sending going to put that money at risk? And I certainly don't want that. So, for me, it's a lot easier to see that if we wait until legislation, if we wait to know what is going to be expected of us, that is when we can make the decision on hiring a director of safety and security, a sworn police chief, hiring sworn officers, hiring guardians. I'm not sure what that's going to look like yet. So, for me, when, Ms. Henry, when you brought it up that you were looking at a person to work eight or 10 hours a week, and that's what, that's what you said, right? I mean, that's not a lot of time right now. It's not like there's going to be, how much work is going to be able to be done in eight to 10 hours a week? You know, as far as how much, what, and what is this person or this position going to be doing in, in, right off the bat for eight or 10 hours a week?
Well, to address a couple of things. Number one, I don't know how much time we need, Grant. I know last year when we were back into a corner and open school, that we had no guarantee for SROs on campus. We were scrambling the two nights before trying to work with FHP and other law enforcement to make sure we had someone on campus. If we would get no recall, there was no answer to guarantee that we'd have SROs on campus. I'm not doing that again. If session's over at the end of April, and we always hope they get pulled in months, then we've got May and June to get to open up either our police force, the guardian program, retired law enforcement, and no one on my staff who I believe, in all due respect, are qualified or certified to oversee law enforcement. I think law enforcement should oversee law enforcement, number one. What they will do for eight to 10 hours, I believe they go back to developing, submitting paperwork, getting us a plan ready and what we need to do. So, to me, it'd take a little bit longer to get that done rather than rushing out and trying to get the paperwork done in a month so we get people. Plus, we have to get it framed. So, if we know all that, when we go into that and as we watch legislation, I think we'll be better prepared. And, and I, I know that we have no idea what the legislature is going to do. It might be done the end of April. It is in the middle of May. You know what I'm saying? We don't know what they're going to do until it's all said and done.
But yet, there's, there's not a pressing need right now. There's been no, no incident that's happened with the sheriff's office.
Just the very fact that he would not answer the letter you sent him, or that we sent him.
I, I guess that's a question I had because I've never heard. Has, did the sheriff respond to our letter?
No.
And when did that letter get sent? What date?
Oh, gosh.
Couple of months ago.
It was two months ago. So, the, so the, Mr. Dogg, I, everything that you say, I concur with.
Well.
But, but the sheriff hasn't responded to, and we didn't just send him a letter. We sent a proclamation and a resolution, I'm sorry. And, and we sent that with two, with two, making it very clear, we're going to be asking the legislature. You know better than us that, that it's very highly likely this legislature is going to take up expanding of the guardian program. And the sheriff has made it clear he has no interest in that. So, if that is the case, then we will not be prepared. And since session is late this year, session will be over by the time we would have to have signed an agreement for an SROs for next year. So, by waiting, the criticism that we had amongst ourselves was that we shouldn't rush this. I remember that from, from this chair at that time. We should not rush doing something. And so, now we're doing something incrementally, and the idea is we should slow down. And yet, by slowing down, if we slow this down now, session will be in a case where we, we will have to then commit for another year with the sheriff's office that I have not heard from staff anything that says things are improving when it comes to our relationships. So, I understand you're saying it's going to, this, this isn't going to help it. I don't know how it can make anything's any better, I mean, worse, because he's not returning our phone calls.
Well, we have an established school resource officer program that I want to keep in place. And I don't want to send the wrong message to the public that we are going into the business of, of law enforcement. I mean, I don't agree with the sheriff that he doesn't support guardians. I don't agree with the superintendent that we want to open a police department. That's the way I feel. I, I can't support this, but I would plead with the board to let's look at this down the road when we have a little more time to know what our requirements are going to be.
Ms. Grant, I want to tell you, every, every week, several times a week, people ask me about, I hope y'all made an agreement with sheriff's department, do you know what you're doing? And every single time I have to answer, no, we don't know. We don't know what's going to happen. So, I see this as something to make us aware, to know, proactive, just like the person mistake came by Citrus County is proactive. We don't wait for the hammer to fall. We do something ahead of time. And I see this as something ahead of time to be in place, to have a program ready to go because we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know if there's going to be any help.
And Doug, I agree with you. I, I see what you're saying on both sides. I truly do. But I want us to be ready.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to postpone a motion to hire a police chief and revisit the issue after legislative session ends.
And it seems to fail without a second. So, with that, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of approving the superintendent's recommendation of hiring Larry Buddy Grant to be appointed the position of district police chief, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
It passes four to one.
And I will say that, that I like the term proactive. I, I remember that, I had nightmares last year trying to deal with the sheriff.
We know.
I mean, I, I was up like two and three o'clock in the morning going up, and I don't want to do that again. And I think if this is going to be our business plan, and we don't open up a business without a business plan. So, we have, we did our job descriptions being proactive. So, now if we need to do more policies, procedures for this business plan of a police force, I'm not opposed to spending some money, getting that paperwork explained. We're not hiring anybody except for Buddy Grant to do this paperwork for us so that if we have these stalled negotiations, we can, we can make our decision at that point. But I know when we went to the, and Sam said, I, I asked her on the Thursday before school was going to open, there was an article in the paper that the sheriff said, I'm going to have SROs in every one of our schools. And I said, I've known Sam since she was a kid, so I can call her Sam. She's a ten-sim. He needs to sign one piece of paper. What is it going to cost? He's going to charge X amount of dollars per day, per SRO, and he wouldn't sign that.
And this.
We can't make decisions if we don't know how to.
We need to pause because we've got a, we have, we have already passed a time circle of 5:15, and that was my fault, board, so I apologize. With that, is there anyone who would like to come forward for comments at this time? You have no? Okay. With that, we can continue. Did you have, do you want to finish your thought? Go ahead.
I'm just saying, I see this as proactive. We're just doing more paperwork that's going to be necessary and we'll be prepared. Last year, at the beginning of school, we were not prepared.
No.
And, and so, I, we did the job descriptions so that we have alternative choices instead of being.
Well, and again, you know my view. I've made it clear all.
And I appreciate it. And I know the work you're doing.
And, you know, I, I would say it's more premature. Words voted. I understand that process. I know we're, we're moving ahead. I know what's going to happen next. We've got to focus on these guardian programs. We've got to be watching the legislation as it comes down. Okay? So, I'm fully aware. I, I'm fully aware of that. I just, you know, thought it was more prudent for me. And, and you know, I've, I've said this all along, so nobody, I mean, people know how I feel. But that we worked to this point yet. And, and my hope was we wouldn't get there. We probably will have to have something, you know? But I, my point is that I wanted to wait. So, you know, I made my.
And Mr. Dogg, I think that's, I know it doesn't sometimes see it with, I'm a vote of four to one. I think we hear you more than you realize, or, or, I don't want this to sometimes think we're not hearing you because you, you have, I think, brought us when it comes to the guardian program to recognize the value of it. I will tell you, I, I couldn't have imagined initially it. And the information you have provided, that you'll continue to provide us and share with us, has been instrumental in ways that I advocate now to say, if you're not looking at. we're not hearing you, because you, you have, I think, brought us, when it comes to the guardian program, to recognize the value of it. I will tell you, I, I couldn't have imagined initially, and the information you have provided, that you'll continue to provide us and share with us, has been instrumental in ways that I advocate now to say, if you're not looking at it, talking about it, considering it, you need to be. And you, and, and you know, I have said to people that you need to talk to our school board member, Doug Dodd, because I think he understands this issue better than anyone. So with that, we do have one piece or business that we need to do, because the Board has done that, and that is, I would like if, it's, it's always hard to call you anything but Buddy. I, I would need to have Buddy Grant, if you would join me up front, and I'd like the superintendent, if you are willing, did you want to, it's just me? It's just me, oh. To come forward, though, for me to give you the oath of office. And yes, please. I'm gonna hand that one to you. They're gonna put you this way. Do you solemnly swear that you will affirm and support, protect, defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida? And that you are duly qualified to hold the office under the United States Constitution? And that you will faithfully perform the duties of Police Chief of Citrus County School Board, Police Department, on which you are about to enter?
I do.
With that, congratulations, Chief. I want to do something, too. Because I know that's how you always feel. You always have that.
First, I would say thank you. I'm very humbled and feel blessed to have this opportunity to once again serve this community. Now, I've made a lifelong devotion from, in my very young days in the military, and coming out and entering law enforcement, and, and I've made a lifetime of that. And I get a lot of, you know, I get emotional just, you know, thinking about the charge that this, that comes with this responsibility. I echo some of the feelings that were talked about here today, for sure. And I just want you to know, you know, my macho's always been, what works requires work. And for me, for the safety of our students, faculty, staff, our schools, you will get that work out of me. And I will try to fulfill all your expectations to their fullest. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Just trying to check my map right now. Chuck Dixon, we have a claim to grow. Mr. Dixon?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. I have one policy item today, and that is a request to set a public hearing to approve the proposed revisions to Policy 2.9, which is tobacco use in district facilities. This matter was discussed by Policy Informs Committee in July and presented to you on the, at the September 25th workshop. Revisions were requested by the school to address a safety issue. And Ms. Bishop is here to answer questions about the school issue, and I can answer questions if you have any.
Yes?
About the outside, when kids smoke, and then you addressed it the last time. And when I was going by this week, the kids were still there smoking. Is there something going to be addressed, tell them to go with the other kids? Don't smoke here.
Yes, ma'am. Once this is approved, then we will talk with our students. Right now, there's not gonna change the policy, so...
I see. I know where we're going, Tom.
Yeah, they don't have a location right now. It's not been approved, so they still, they're still allowed to smoke on campus in any location, so they have to walk in. Yes, ma'am. Once it's approved, we'll be with all of our students and explain where the new location is, and I don't see we'll have any problem. They're looking forward to this. We've talked to several students, and they are looking forward to having a location besides staying on the side of the street, not to mention the safety because of them crossing the street back and forth.
And I will say that when we discussed this, I saw a decrease in the number of students standing over there. But just this week, when I came over, there were four standing out there. And I think the first time I've seen it in a month, so I think the kids are appreciating what we're...
Well, again, it hasn't happened yet, though, Miss Bishop.
No, but I'm saying, when they thought it, they were coming, it, it slowed it down a lot. They used to come, I couldn't get them parking out without seeing the smoke.
You probably just missed them. They're there. They're still standing on the street. Yeah, and it is a safety issue. I mean, it's almost weekly that we see someone always get hit, so...
I'm the one driving.
Right. The students are welcome, and so we would appreciate it moving forward, because I know that it would be best interest of the students and our citizens driving by.
But they come to the, to the sidewalks.
No, they, say it again?
They, we won't see them on the sidewalk.
No, ma'am. They will have a location on campus.
And they have companies that they come to the sidewalk?
We'll deal with them.
Okay.
And that's, and Ms. Councils, I mean, that's part of, of my question, too, and that we had talked about it in the SAC committee. So this has been, it's come up through the SAC committee. You know, there were some people that were not in favor of it on the SAC committee, but it did pass pretty strong. But, you know, it is, it is an issue we've gotta face, because we're a, a smoke-free school district. Every place around is, has gone smoke-free and tobacco-free. So, you know, this truly is, you know, coming to us as a safety issue. And my question is going to be that we, you know, the students, and there were students representing at the SAC committee, there were students there. But if, if this smoking section doesn't keep students from being out on the sidewalks on all four corners and crossing the road, then all we've done is added another smoking area, okay? And so my, my comment all along has been, if you can enforce that, keep them off those street corners and away from traffic, then we need to, we need to stay with our countywide policy on, on no tobacco and shut down the smoking area. That's the way I feel.
I agree.
I agree.
Because it is, I mean, I'm surprised that there hasn't been more pushback from the tobacco-free floor in some of these groups. And I think there could be, because this has gotta go to a, a, a public, a public hearing, right? Mr. Dixon?
Right.
So we're, we're approving this to go to a public hearing. And that would be our only facility where we would allow smoking in an area that would be away from our younger students that go to school there, right? I mean, you kind of have some...
Right. We have, we have a location that, I mean, obviously, our high school students can walk past it if they'd like to, but it's not the location they're gonna be allowed to go to.
Right.
But, Mr. Dodd, we, just, it's just an example. We, a couple of years ago, we had a safety incident on Highway 44. Where students were standing out on Highway 44. And we had a couple citizens call and complain because they were distracting traffic. Ms. Dave says here she can attest to it. Ms. Davis, Ms. Casalveria, and myself, we all went around, talked to our students, told them that they would not be allowed to stand on 44 on the sidewalk anymore, that they would have to go to another area that was safer because of that traffic. We did, we had one student that decided to go back out there. We went out and had a conversation with them. We have not had any students on 44 for two years. So our students will listen to us. If they don't, we'll have discussion and we'll put some consequences in place. But I will tell you, they welcome this, because they don't stand out on the road and smoke by choice. Most of these students, remember, are here at our school for six and a half to seven hours a day. Some of them don't have vehicles, so they can't leave during their smoke break. They get a two fifteen-minute breaks and a half-hour lunch. So they don't have any other choice but to go across the street. They would prefer to go somewhere where they can sit down, because what, we've got picnic tables in the location that they'll be designated to smoke in, where they can talk on their phone without having traffic drive by, not to mention just the safety aspect of walking to the backside of campus versus walking across two lanes of traffic or four lanes of traffic. So I don't, I don't see it would be an issue. But if it is, and they don't follow the rules, then, of course, we would be in favor of saying, nope, you know, no more on campus, back to finding a location to smoke off campus. But I think it's worth the effort to do it.
Ms. Bishop, you may have mentioned this before, and I've just forgotten, because it happens. Is there power, because you talked about the cell phone. Is there a power, something to, you know, to encourage them? They can come there and charge up their cell phone while they're there or something? I'm thinking of ways of continually encouraging them, and I don't know that that may, you know...
I'm not, I am not 100% sure if there's power in that location. I do not think so.
And, and there, and there may not be. That's why, it was just a thought of what another way of encouraging them to be there.
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't see it as being a problem. They're asking for it.
Yeah.
For a couple of different reasons, so...
And again, we're approving this to go to public hearing.
Yes.
Which is what we're doing today.
Okay, I move to approve to advertise for...
If you want any changes to it.
Now's the time.
No changes?
I'm just saying.
Well, do you recommend a change?
I don't recommend any changes.
Okay.
That doesn't stop...
That doesn't stop...
It's a public hearing, I want to make a change.
No, we're not gonna change to the public hearing. I move to approve to advertise for a public hearing at the February 12, 2019 School Meeting to approve the revision of Policy 2.90 Tobacco Use in District Facilities.
Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Councils to approve to advertise for a public hearing at the February 12, 2019 School Board Meeting to approve the revisions to Policy 2.90 Tobacco Use in District Facilities. Any more comments or questions?
Yep, there was one thing I just thought of, because I know it was brought up at the SAC committee, committee, is that dealing with, it also includes other tobacco products. I mean, it's not just smoking. It includes the other tobacco products that are used. Isn't that, is that correct?
Thought that was the...
Vaping and so forth.
Yeah, well, you know, vaping, would that be included, Mr. Bradshaw?
Be included in our definition.
That's what I'm...
In our definition.
If I recall, too, it's broader than even just vaping, but includes any type of electronic inhaling device or something of that nature. They're getting very creative how they're referring to them. The jewels and, and others. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approves five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullen, the Dell Financial Services lease.
Mr. Chamberlain will address that.
And I see Mr. Chamberlain brought backup.
Yes, Lance Clutch, our number project leader is also here to do the specific questions. We worked with Dell to come up with this solution to centralize all of our services in a district office at the TRC, and also the backup system at the University of Philadelphia. Comes in at a lower cost overall than current method of purchasing and servicing, and it gives us more reliable, better performance, and a better deal of loss.
And better.
We'll see savings over a few years, not right away.
Correct, yes.
And that's true, Mr. Mullen, as you're saying it, then, then, I was very appreciative to have you. I'm sure you probably did with some others, but spent some time talking about this. The one thing is, obviously, the savings, but to me, the other important thing was the re... The improved redundancy and backup that it would provide us, not to mention the streamlining and not dependent on each of the school locations for those controls, which I'm sure Lance will appreciate with, with all of, of that you're doing. So just from this geek's perspective, this is a, this is a real thumbs up, so...
And we say there's a cost savings. Even if we stayed with our plan that we originally had, we would see an increase in what we had originally budgeted, because costs, I'm told, were going up about 30%. Lance, definitely about 30%.
Yeah.
30%.
All the technology tariffs, you know, it's due to the tariffs. Everything's gonna go up, probably in the March timeframe, 25% to 30%.
And we're very, at this point, I think, dependent on the site locations, expertise as well to play some role. At least if something goes down, Lance, is, is that, are they having to kind of service parts of that? Or you assist them?
Currently, yes.
Yeah, currently?
Yes. Basically, if a server were to go down, they would contact us. We'd have to drive out there, diagnose it, then contact Dell. Dell would bring us apart, install it, and then they would be back up.
And with an aging fleet?
Yes.
That tends to happen more times than we care to, to do.
The new system is set up to where if that server were to fail, it automatically transfers to another server. It sends us a notification, puts that server in maintenance mode, and the end user never even notices that anything went down.
So we're expecting less, less downtime at our sites as well?
Exactly.
As a result of...
And it truly is, I think, balancing that, that personnel. Mr. Dodd, I'm sorry, what you were gonna say?
Is our existing system with Dell as well, or...
Yes.
So when Dell, was this something that Dell brought forth as an option? Or was this, I, I mean, where did we get to this point, right?
Well, with our increase in bandwidth, that kind of gave us the option to head this way. But now that we have a significant increase in bandwidth at each location, that gives us the ability to have everything at the TRC. This has been out, this is not new. This has been out. But now, we're able to accommodate it now.
The bandwidth, we had part of this, we've slowed everything down in the TRC, but now we have enough bandwidth that we can handle that. This is more efficient.
And, and tell me about the redundancy again on this, on how this new system? Tell me about that side.
Okay, so if one of the servers happens to fail, whether it's hardware, memory goes bad, it'll automatically transfer. There's about 10 servers, so we only gonna use about five. So if something were to happen to one of them, the system knows, manages it, and shifts it to a different server that's waiting there on standby.
Because our phone system runs through our servers, correct? Our voice over protocol?
Yeah, well, it runs over the network, yes.
It runs over the network?
Yes.
And when we had that issue with the problem with the network, that was not our issue, though?
No, it was Spectrum.
Would not have, this system would not benefit our issue that we had with Spectrum all on the, on the voice over protocol on the, on the phones? Is that right?
That's correct. That was another issue.
Okay. So the server issue that we're dealing, that's gonna save us, I mean, because, you know, we're, we're looking at, what was shown on here is 1.6 million, and long-term, it's gonna be cut to 1.37 million.
Correct. And that, but that also includes a disaster recovery here at the district office as well. So that's gonna be four servers over here, okay? That will, you know, house some critical, like...
We don't have that.
So if everything was wiped out totally at the TRC, we could run our critical applications and things through this. We haven't had anything about that.
And that, to me, is a, I mean, that's huge. That's huge for us. And again, the bandwidth, as Mr. Mullen was bringing up, that plays a role in the fact that we are able to now do this.
Right.
We like bandwidth when we can have it.
So how long is the, how long is the transition period? I mean, this is gonna be over, this will, will the, will the disaster component with the server here be in the initial phase?
Yeah, yes, yes. We will bring all the hardware in initially, and we will move over to the critical applications first. Oh, the district pays the critical, like, our standard, and then transportation systems. So that'll be the first thing put into place.
I need a motion.
I move to approve the Dell Financial Services 60-month lease for the Dell EMC VX Rail appliance.
Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers to approve the Dell Financial Services 60-month lease for the Dell EMC VX Rail appliance. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approves five zero. Good work, Chamberlain. Thank you. What did you update?
I would say good afternoon, but it's evening now, so I will make this quick. I received the final operational audit, um, on Monday, and that will come to you at the January board meeting. On that same day, the auditors arrived to start the financial audit. So, um, needless to say, we just jumped from one to the other. Um, there are, investments are doing quite well. We are up about an average of six basis points, which would be point oh six percent from October to November. Our balances were still a little low in November, but we did get our first distribution from the new tax year's taxes of about eight million the end of November. We'll get our larger payouts for the taxes in December, and then they start trickling off January through the rest of the year. Budget-wise, we are about twenty-five percent through our budget, but we are actually thirty-three percent through the actual physical year. So, um, that's because mostly we have the double payrolls at the end of the year, um, but our general fund is still maintaining its balance. That's about all I have right now. All right? So we will bring you the operational audit to the January board meeting.
And, Ms. Tammy, as next year starts to develop, please only give us good news.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. And, Mr. Redchow. Uh, I am going to follow, uh, my predecessors, uh, with citizen comments. Anyone coming before us? With that, we will move on to any other business, um, that comes before the board. And so, Mr. Mullen, did you have any of this?
Uh, just that, and with Ms. Powers, what we'll do is come back at a workshop when we get more information about next year's plan, and try to get some specific details on what it is that we're looking for to add to the plan. So, once we know what next year's plans are going to be mandated from the state, then we can tell you what that's going to look like, and then we can discuss what you want in addition to that in the plan, so that we have time to make sure we get the enhancement councils trained, okay?
Uh, we just pause, um, that I skipped over. I can get somebody to motion to approve the minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the minutes. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approves five zero. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Dodd, then.
Well, I know, uh, we had spoken before about having a workshop at one, sometime on the middle school athletics and sports, so...
I think it's January.
Okay. Are we, uh, and so we're not, we don't have a workshop in December?
No.
I think it's Christmas Day, somebody else will... I, I didn't know that. But so that's why I asked the same question.
Yeah, I'm just, uh...
I'll be a little late for that.
Just appreciate on that. And then, uh, the only other thing I had was that I'm still involved with Mark Stone and Doug, as we actually meet this week in Tallahassee and try to, we get an initial report that's going to be in January one, so, uh, that'll be done up in Tallahassee this week, tomorrow.
Thanks.
So, Doug, January one, when, is that when I think the...
It's, it's got to be into the governor and the legislature.
Okay.
Both legislative bodies, so, yeah.
Can, just to ensure, is it, can we ask if Mr. Dodd can send that to, if you, because you make it, I know, when, when it's a release publicly?
Yes.
Can you just make sure Lisa gets it, and then we could disseminate that, just to make sure we all get? I know it'll go fourteen different ways, but we'd rather get it from you, Doug.
Well, right now, it's, it's overboard pages, the whole... So with, with all of the information, and not all of that's public record, but, um, yes, when, when it's, when it's done and becomes public record, I'll certainly, um...
But it's that bridge person.
Yes.
I don't remember, Dan, Tampa, there was a person there who was at the scene and experienced a lot of the things that occurred, and she was sharing that information, it was scary, some of the things that should have happened, didn't happen because of various reasons, very scary.
Ms. Bryant?
I enjoyed our trip to Tampa, I learned a lot. And I'm busy with the, um, cop a kind of speech contest now. Yeah.
Want some shit, dear?
Yeah, we do, we do, we do.
Oh, yes. And, uh, Mr. Mullen, I appreciate you, you reflecting on the plans for next year, because it's a super concern of mine, but, uh, this is said, we've been at forty years, it's...
You said thirty-four, and I don't want...
Could be that. I was, I was at the School Health Advisory Committee. And learned that eighty percent of the, um, the hearing testing was done in the county, the dental sealing was done in middle school, elementary will start soon, and there's a man called Dr. John Grace, psychologist, he's, uh, starting an adult clinic for the homeless, but, uh, it's a, for mental health interventions. Uh, at, uh, Citrus High School, there's a seven-week panic attack group, um, and they're using therapy dogs to deal with the panic attacks, so that, that should be what we get to talk on and see. And this one was very surprising about food. I learned that those who work in the, if you concession stands must now have training in working concession. I didn't know that, I thought, wow, that's...
Mr. Pistone's already set that up, Mr. Bishop.
I'm sorry.
But concession stand workers are...
We're on, yes, I'm on it. We have, we have...
They're on it.
Yeah, I, I don't doubt it. I don't... I also met with the mental health committee, and again, we went over what was happening in the school of counselors and, and social workers and other people involved in mental health. And Mr. Heber's wife, uh, sort of headed that and then put it together. I went to the IB parents' meeting, and the students there discussed what they'd done over the summer, and then I was like, what, did you go for summer vacation? No, no. It's, uh, what they did in volunteer programs and internships and several of them, like a nine out of ten discussed what they did. And it was amazing, it's a very high-level thinking going on there. Uh, Mr. Sullivan, who's the Spanish teacher, discussed how to, uh, be successful in Spanish and study. And then June just mentioned, we went to FSBA last week in Tampa, and we go to the legislative committee meeting, and, uh, Mr. Kennedy is right up to him. In fact, he had a video, we're talking about a lot of stuff going, his face was every place.
Sorry.
And we went to the ethics meeting, because everyone's required to take an ethics class. And by gosh, this one was sort of interesting.
It was fun.
It was fun.
It was a lot of...
I didn't think ethics could be fun.
It was fun.
Before that, it was, oh my God, there, here, read us all these laws and stuff, but this one was, uh, very involved and fun, and that's it. Thank you, Ms. Tammy.
Well, I, I enjoyed going to those meetings too, learned a lot. I haven't put my points in, so I'm going to open up, and like Tina said, you know, I have to, we have to keep putting in points to renew our certification, so, um, done that. But I didn't drive to home and sassy when I left Tampa. I followed Doug to the meeting with Masulo and, um, Mr. Simpson, and he would, he would make you proud.
Doug, okay, exactly.
Yeah, he, um, he was very clear, very concise, and said, um, what we needed, and I think he got some heads going like this.
Good.
So he did a very, very good job, and I'm very proud of him. So we move on, and I'm going to put my points in for the certification.
Doug?
And I'm doing tropicana Thursday morning and Friday morning.
No, I was just going to say that we brought those issues to the, to, that, to the legislative delegation that we spoke about, and, uh, you know, one of the things, I just want to make sure, we did talk about alternative pathways to graduation.
Thank you.
On the vocational side.
And we did for Mrs. Powers' benefit, and listened to a lot of other community people talk about mental health and what they're doing in Citrus County, so it wasn't just us, but, but he did mention that, too.
Thank you. And I appreciate you do, doing that in, in a role as your outgoing chair, and also just bringing up those points, because you really are, are, uh, the person on that. And, you know, I think we need to remember, too, one of the advantages we have with Wilton Simpson is that he, you know, is slated to be in two thousand and twenty, the Senate President. He's clearly, uh, his leadership seems to be, uh, definitely focused on him taking on that role, and there's a lot of things moving in that direction. And then the other piece of that is that, um, Ralph Masulo, I think, we need to watch, because my hope is that he'll have some leadership role within education, and, and, uh, those committee assignments have not, as we know, released yet. I know his office is waiting on that. So I'm, I'm crossing my fingers, because, uh, we're trying to, to partner on some things. I had a chance last week to attend the Consortium of Florida Educational Foundations. They had their, um, annual meeting conference here in Crystal River, and it was hosted by our Citrus County Educational Foundation. It truly highlighted the stuff we have going on here, and I just can't thank enough, um, Shonda Burdette, who really facilitated that happening. We had an opportunity to host, um, I think they had sixty-two districts out of Florida that were represented here, and, uh, they hosted them at Jean McGee's House in the evening.
At a crackers.
At a crackers. They toured the Duke plant.
Yeah.
They, uh, and they did a lot of training at plantation. Superintendent, um, I know stopped by, and I wanted to thank her, um, and her staff for providing, uh, some of our, the opportunity to have the educational foundation be able to do this, because I know on their own, they, they probably couldn't. So I also want to thank Dr. Hebert, um, for that. And also, you know, someone here who sometimes, um, is doing stuff and we don't realize it, and that's Jennifer Woods, um, out of the Title I department, and, you know, Dr. Hebert helped create that role with Ms. Burdette years ago. Dr. Hebert's always been good about parent, uh, involvement and, uh, parent liaisons, and so Shonda Burdette started that, but Jennifer Woods has really done a great job, and Shonda would, uh, would be remiss if I did not mention that, so, thank you. I just also wanted to lift up that I had a great conversation with, um, Ms. Douglas about school and higher advancement, school advisory enhancement councils, and, uh, school improvement plans, and along those lines of what, some of the concerns and, and things that Mr. Mullen talked about, and I, I guess I, my, the thing that I would lift out is that I was very excited and encouraged by those conversations, and I, I really feel like staff, you know, is listening to our concerns on that, and they're coming up with how to both address those, because they're their concerns, too. That's probably the most reassuring thing when, when we sit down with you all, is that. What is, yeah?
You know, I thought it was interesting, because I, I had used SAC, but I think it has been changed now to just school advisory council.
It, it's actually in statute as, it's, yeah, it actually has always been for, I think, actually, for fifteen or more years, as school advisory councils.
Right.
Years ago, we added it, I think, when it first came out, to school advisory enhancement councils.
Yeah, that's...
But enhancement is really not in statute. It's just, uh, so you're right.
It's school advisory.
It's, it's, yeah. They still say SAC either way.
Yeah. And SAC stands for stealing coffee.
That's good. The superintendent stepped out, but, but Mr. Mullen, um, can, can do this, too. I just wanted to, uh, talk about January workshop. I wondered if, I know we've got some housekeeping stuff that you already are going to be bringing up for that workshop, but I wondered, maybe what we could do is start that, uh, the regular workshop in the morning, and then maybe what we could do is do a kind of, a lunch retreat upstairs with just us? And give us a chance to maybe just kind of go through some talking procedures, you know, it's, it, I think it's probably a good time for us, you know, we've got Ms. Lisa now with us, and to say, okay, is this, you know, we've been doing some procedural things differently, and I think they're working, but it's a good time, we can just have some conversations with those. I don't think it has to be an all-day thing, I'm thinking of maybe a couple hours at most, and we could just get lunch and bring it here or something, do it upstairs, so it's a little more laid back than, than...
Do the whole meeting upstairs?
No, we'll do our regular workshop here, and then we'll finish that, and we can go upstairs and, and do it that way. That way we can, um, just a more relaxed setting. I, I'm thinking just for, um, for the superintendent's sake, that, I'm just thinking that maybe Lisa, superintendent, whoever she thinks, and just us, meaning it doesn't...
We have to have it open.
In the public. No, no, it's still, it's, we've always done it, when we've done it, we've always done it as a, as a public meeting.
It's still a booth.
It just allows us to, to go upstairs and have it a little more.
And we want Mr. Pistone to assist us with that.
We, I, I have no problem paying Mr. Pistone, Mr. Pistone for, for food on that, so, um, if he has that, that's, that works for me. If there's anything that you all feel like there's thoughts or things you want to add to it, go ahead and get with, just send it to Lisa, and we can just add it to the, to the things.
Yeah, middle school athletics, for sure.
Well, that's on the, that's actually during the regular, uh, workshop. Yeah, the regular workshop.
Wait a minute.
So we'll start down here.
Is that going to, the, is that happening at the regular school party, going on the eighth?
No, the workshop.
The workshop.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so the January workshop, we'll start down here.
All right.
And then we'll, when we finish with the regular workshop business, we'll kind of do our retreat upstairs.
Okay.
Some of the things that, um, that I've been working on was to send, you know, I was trying to make sure that we all kind of stayed informed again with activities that are going on, so I was going to reinstitute sending, uh, you guys a calendar of events, now that we also have shared calendars that we can do, or a document. Um, Lisa and other people can send it, and if they want, have the board member come to it, or they want the board, you know, to be aware of it. And if I know about it, I'm going to just put it on for all of us. Just reminder, you know, upward bounds coming, graduation dates, all of those, just to try and get them early enough so that we can just make sure that we are attending stuff. I know we do it, but it'd be great to have that.
And you mean as a, you're talking about having a shared calendar that Lisa, or, or, tell me again what you mean.
So, it, I don't know if you...
The PAT calendar?
Yeah, well, there's two, there's two. So the calendar is events calendar, of just events coming up that we're interested in attending.
Just for the school boards.
Just for the school boards, you know, you know, there, for example, we go to the, you know, the, the easy one is, we've got, um, Galaxy of the Stars coming up. We'll have, you know, different events that we typically go to, just a long enough in, in advance that we have them on our calendars, and that we're not kind of scrambling each month to remind ourselves of what is. We have the district party coming up.